Is now being recorded. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is to elect your officers for the school board. And you have three board officers. Your first officer is your chairperson, then your vice chairperson, and then your secretary. And the chairperson presides at all meetings. She'll have the right to vote on all matters before the school board. The chairperson shall consult with the superintendent on the preparation of the agenda for each meeting. She'll have authority to sign contracts and other instruments as approved by the board in its name and behalf, and she'll have such other powers and duties as the board may from time to time determine. The vice chairperson shall have the powers and duties of the chairperson in his or her absence or for the duration of the disability, and such other powers and duties as a school board may from time to time determine. The secretary is the person who should prepare the non-public minutes of all meetings of the board and execute those clerical duties as are deemed appropriate by the chairperson or the board. If the chairperson or the vice chairperson are absent at a meeting at which a quorum is present, the secretary shall preside. So do we have any nominations for chairperson?
I'd like to nominate Tony Jappel. A second.
Tony, is that something you would be interested in doing?
If my arm is twisted enough, I guess, no, yes.
You'll accept that nomination? Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Tony.
Okay.
That's all.
I could compete against myself.
Amy, do you have a second on that? So all in favor of Tony being chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Tony.
All right.
It's all me.
So I guess our next order of business is to elect the other two officers. So I will accept any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Matt.
Any second on that?
I'll second.
So we've got, Matt, are you interested in being vice chair?
Sure.
Do we have any other nominations to compete with Matthew?
It's formal.
Hey, it's my first day. Hearing none, I will take a vote as Matt Manning for vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So Matt, congratulations.
Thank you.
Secretary. Aaron whispered to me that she'll be secretary, so I'll make a nomination for Aaron to be the secretary.
I'll second it.
We've got a second. Imagine I'll be unopposed as well. All in favor of Aaron as our secretary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, so moving on. Moving on to the minutes. So I will accept a motion for the approval of the regular minutes of March 7th, 2018.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And do we have any corrections or?
Wait for which one?
The regular minutes of March 7th.
March 7th. Oh, okay.
I have none. We have, so hearing none. Jay is a new member, you'll probably want to abstain from voting on this. So all in favor for approval of the regular minutes of March 7th? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And I will accept a motion for the approval of the non-public minutes of March 7th, 2018.
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Nay, none? I will accept a motion for the approval of return to public minutes.
Do you want Jay to abstain?
Oh, right, yeah. Officially abstain, sorry. So I will accept a motion for the approval of return to public minutes of March 7th, 2018.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
No discussion, no corrections. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Abstentions?
Nay.
And finally, the approval of the annual school district meeting minutes of March 20th, 2018.
I'll make a motion.
Make a second?
Second.
Anybody see any corrections? It's a nice short meeting this year, not a lot to go back through.
It's good.
All right. Hearing none? All signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions?
I was there for that one.
You were there for a while?
Yes, you were.
Moving on to communication, correspondence. Judy, do we have any correspondence?
No, you're not.
None tonight, okay. And I assume Vance is outgoing chair, you didn't receive any intern, did you, or?
Um, I did not.
Okay. And Debbie, business administrator report.
Okay, I do have a couple of things. I have the MS-22, which a number of you signed. It is the Report of Appropriations as Voted at the Annual Meeting. It's the form, in the format that the state wants it just, and it will tie in with our minutes and our budget that we've already submitted to them. So that just needs to be signed by everyone. And there's a blue pen, and I can pass that around. There's also, in front of Tony and Jay, is a manifest binder, and in that is this week's accounts payable and checks, as well as some old payroll. So those can be reviewed. And then one last thing, I think way back beginning of the year, we had told you about the state coming in to do our National School Lunch Program Administrative Review. It's done every three years. So they were here the last two days doing the administrative review. They primarily focused on the elementary school, but since we share one cafeteria, they saw all operations. So they did watch lunch, they watched breakfast and breakfast after the bell, because that's what we have at the elementary school. They also looked at the fresh fruits and vegetable program that we have at the elementary school also. So they're looking at, and basically what they'll, we had our wrap-up meeting today, and they provide technical assistance, or there's some corrective actions, or there could be some financial actions. We did not walk out of there with any financial actions, which is good. And those findings would be like if our free and reduced applications weren't filled out correctly, or we weren't serving the kids the right foods to get a reimbursable meal. So we could have some financial penalties if we weren't following the guidelines. So what they're really looking at is, they're looking at a number of things, but meal access and reimbursement, so they'll go through all of our free and reduced applications to make sure the numbers were calculated correctly, make sure that what we get is truly getting recorded, and all the meals that are served, whether they're free, reduced, or regular, making sure those counts are correct in the system. They're looking at the meal patterns and nutritional value. So basically, they're looking at to make sure that each of the meals that we serve has all the components of a reimbursable meal, or it won't be counted. They look at the nutritional value, because there's a lot of guidelines on how much sodium, how much fat, all the different nutritional values, so they're looking at all that. They look at all the production records in the cafeteria, all the menus that are made, every recipe, so that they, and they look at over a period of time. We had sent them a lot of information beforehand. They also look at what's called resource management. So they look at our meal pricing, and they compare that, there's some forms. And I think each spring we come to you with, this is the prices that we're recommending for next year's lunch and breakfast, and there's some formulas that they're looking at based on some of the free and reduced meal reimbursement rates and just some ratios there. They're looking at our non-program revenues, like à la carte foods, and again, making sure we classify everything in the right place. Adult meals, catering, so when Cafe Services does, like our in-service or end-of-year. Breakfast for the high school, things like that, those are different catering functions, making sure we classify everything, looking at our meal charging policy, our wellness policy. So they look at everything. So we'll get our final report in 30 days, and then we have 30 days to respond to the report. They've been busy the last two days.
I guess.
Pretty thorough, yeah.
You said they do that how often?
Every three years.
Every two, three years?
And that is it.
All right, thanks, Deb.
Tony, I did have some correspondence, but it's some non-public.
Okay.
Updates.
All right, we will be having non-public tonight, so we can go over the correspondence then.
Well, actually, one more thing.
Oh, sure.
May 9th, the auditors are scheduled to come, because we had talked about that at our last meeting, so I threw out a few dates to them.
Okay. Thanks, Debbie.
Prior to that meeting, can we get another copy of the report?
Yep.
Please? Thank you.
Superintendent's report, Judy.
This one, please. Okay, in your packet, you do, you did get a, each of you did get a three-ring binder, and you can, you know, feel comfortable bringing that with you at every meeting, because it does have some interesting processes and procedures that you may want to refer back to. And sometimes we do refer back to them at a meeting. The other thing that you're also going to be looking at in your packet is an ethics policy. That policy has to be read and signed, and so that we keep it on file at the SAU for each board member. And it goes through, we can go through that when we get to the board action section of the agenda. That will be something that we'll have to pick up at the end of this meeting. You did receive in your packet a biomass committee meeting minutes. And I don't know how the board wants to move forward with that. You can either have the facilities committee review it, and, you know, and then make a recommendation to the, you know, review the report, and then make a recommendation to the board, or you all can look at the minutes of that meeting and determine what you want to do as a board. Right in the middle of transition, so, you know, any process you'd use would be fine. The next thing you would have to really be looking at is whether you're, now that the biomass completed their charge, the biomass committee completed their charge, then you need to take a vote, or a motion, or whatever, to end the biomass committee.
Okay.
For anything at this point in time.
When was the last time they met? Do you remember, Brian?
Minutes, we have.
What did it say on the minutes?
What was the question?
The last time the biomass committee met?
March 22nd?
March 22nd, yeah.
But that was, that was just Mark and Judy, is that right?
Yeah, I couldn't make it. But I had the info from the.
Yeah, I mean, this one, has it been a while since our whole group has met?
It was, I'd say pretty impossible to get the whole group together. The first day was successful, and beyond that, I don't think you ever did.
You had, you had a couple of meetings.
At the beginning, when everybody went, and then we'd set things and.
Visitations, the committee went and did visitations.
People did see stuff. You know, in my opinion, I won't get into it. We'll just stay with the facts.
Okay. So Brian, do you think that we should, you know, now that we're just seeing this thing from Melanson, you want to review that as the facility committee?
Yeah.
Before we move on that?
Sure.
I mean, nobody's really had time to digest that, and I think.
Yetn?
Or yetn, sorry. It just says Melanson on top of it.
Oh, that's the group.
I'm looking at the wrong one. Yeah, yetn, sorry.
The thing from Wayne Fielder.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can review it.
Because we have another.
Facilities.
Yeah, because we have, we'll have a facilities meeting on the 18th.
Correct.
Before our next board meeting.
And then acting on it, I guess, it comes down to what? I don't really want to put it in just the hands of the facilities.
No, no, that'll be a decision by the full board.
Well, that's why I want the whole board to have all the same information.
Right.
I don't want it to just be talked about at facilities.
Yeah.
Because it's going in a different direction again.
Okay. So the feeling with the biomass committee is that it's, it's served its purpose for its charge, so we'll look to dissolve that. We'll just do that when we're doing other stuff requiring board action?
Right, you can do it under your committee assignments, because that's under board action.
Okay.
And you will have, that would be the next thing, you will have committees that will be formed, and each one can, can look at what committees they would best, you know, be able to work on. Just a reminder that this is, this upcoming year is negotiating year, so we will need two to three board members on that, not necessarily three at every single negotiations, but you would do want that backup in case somebody can't be there. There should always be two board members at a negotiations. But you do have a legal counsel there for negotiating, so you're not, you're not doing the actual negotiations. We will be going into non-public regarding nominations of professional staff this evening. We do have to get notices out to teachers by, the deadline is April 15th, and your next board meeting is April 18th. So we'll have them tonight, and then we can move forward with our contracts. So committees. There is in your packet a copy of the school board evaluation. You also have a copy of the school board calendar. And we do have the school calendar up for one more vote.
This is Scott's fault, I take it.
No, just kidding, it's my fault.
So, actually, I did think of a good thing, but we could talk about it when we get to calendar.
It's been a while.
And then also, the board can decide on whether they want the presentation from the N E C C program to come in. That's the program that I had described about a month ago, coming in to the building as a separate entity, a contracted service, but coming in with the whole program itself and servicing five to six students independently. We just have to give them the room.
The space.
Give them the room and the space, and we have to provide the parent support. But if you don't want the presentation, that's fine too. I just didn't know if you wanted, if we were going to move forward with it. If the board doesn't want to move forward, then we'll have to come up with another, you know, strategy, but that's fine. And then you have some new business, you have your root bids that you will be discussing, and we have a discussion on support staff. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Judy? Thanks, Judy. Scott, principal's report.
Thank you. We had our, our March teacher in services on the 23rd of March. We got Erica Holland, who came in and did a presentation for K through 12 staff on social-emotional learning, and some strategies of how to kind of work with kids who are coming with higher social-emotional needs. She presented through, to K through 12 in the morning, then we broke out. She did a separate kind of K through five session with some middle school teachers who elected to go and attend in the afternoon. And then we had our, the middle high school leadership team had small breakout sessions in the afternoon. Our high school English department brought our high school over to Jean's Playhouse on the 29th to watch King Lear as part of their, as part of their curriculum. So I want to thank Heather Krill and Jen Witcher for their work with that. We recently, released recently, just had another speaker come in through Adapt, and was facilitated by our Y L T A members, by our student members. Bernadette Gleason came in and gave a presentation on Monday afternoon. She spoke to our student body, 6 through 12, regarding around addiction, and how to kind of help others, how to, you know, support students, how to support, you know, your classmates who may be struggling with some of these things that they're maybe being faced with. She gave, there was a beginning activity that was facilitated by our Y L T A students. There was the presentation that happened around 1:00, and then there was a debrief activity that our Y L T A students broke the student body up into groups and debriefed with them afterwards for about 20 minutes from like 2:10 to 2:30. So we thought it was a really great way for our students to kind of be, have some leadership opportunities to be able to kind of tie in what the speaker was talking about. Brenda Vance and Faith Clark, being our two FBLA advisors, they went to their FBLA, their annual FBLA conference this past year. Pleased to report that Linwood was represented very well. They were placed first place in categories of, they had, the student teams had to put together a presentation in various categories, competing against other schools in the, in the New England area. They finished first place in publication design, marketing, and sports management, second place in graphic design and organizational leadership, and also received a third place also in graphic design. They had two different teams enter in there. That was Charmaine, Charmaine, Kai Good, Madison Chase, Delaney Pickering, Xena Bartlett, Julian Clark, Daria Etchings, and Will Lyons were the team that went and represented our school. Charmaine and Chappell. Two more things, both Ginny Doyle and myself are currently halfway through training through CPI down in Concord, which is non-violent crisis intervention training that we're going through right now. So it's been two full days, and we'll be spending two more Thursday and Friday. And hoping to kind of present that out on, come the in-service time during the fall to all staff, and the third quarter ends on Friday. Can't hardly believe it.
All right. That's all I have? All right. Thanks, Scott. Next thing on the agenda is committee reports. As far as policy has not met since our last meeting, I imagine facilities has not either, right? Spent some time there. Have we had any other of the committees meet? I know technology met the other day, I was unable to attend.
Yeah, and technology, Trey talked about the upcoming summer and what rooms were going to be taken, and what activities were going to be going on as far as, you know, the cabling, finishing up on the cabling and whatnot. The other thing that he talked about was looking, moving forward was looking at the type of programs that the, the infrastructure of the technology within the school can handle, and what that's going to look like in the classrooms, and wanting to, we'll be sending out a survey to teachers to find out what they like, what they don't like, and what types of programs they're already using, so that he can track them and see how they're moving forward with them. And then looking at some type of training schedule for the summer for staff. Basically, we just talked about.
Okay.
Transportation, just an update, I guess, but where we end there. But John is still kind of active and trying to find us a van.
Okay.
So, I mean, he has those connections, so.
Yeah.
You know, I asked him how he's making out, and so he's got a few options when he gets numbers. He had a tragedy in the trucking, sales of car business. There's like a good friend that runs all those dealerships all over the state, just passed away, so. And so he's waiting on some more information, but he's, he's still going to, I think he's our best bet to actively, you know, source some numbers on these things, you know, at the best rate. The only question I had in regards to transportation is are we ready to auction the other?
We've had it posted for sale.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, we've had that posted, we reached out. I mean, we've had it posted around in the newspaper, all of our regular posting places. We've actually contacted some bus companies to see.
Cool, I just didn't see anything.
Yeah, we have had it posted, I think we said.
It's been so long, I just.
I forget what the date was, but sometime near the end of April for.
For the deadline?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll update.
So if John's interested.
He probably already knows. I just have a question on the preschool task force, is that, is that a, would that be considered a committee?
Yeah, I suppose it could be.
Yeah, we could put it under new business.
Would it be new business?
Yeah.
Did we ever know about it?
No.
We haven't discussed it at board level, no, so. Some of them might have known about it.
It was talked about at a board meeting, because Jasmine's a representative of that.
Okay.
So, but the update on the meeting has not been, hasn't, hasn't been shared yet, so I can give an update on that.
Okay.
Well, the update's in the book, in the board packet.
There it is.
Right, here it is, and it's in there. So I mean, I guess, Brian, you can close your question now and see if we can address it.
Where'd it come from?
Okay, so the task force was brought up a couple months ago when the increase, we're getting an increase of preschoolers.
Yeah.
So for example, every year we, we tend to have about two or three preschoolers come in and, and work with the special ed department, and they receive their related services. This particular year, you're almost up to 10. You have nine definite, and then there's 10 preschoolers. So that's when they developed a task force and brought in classroom teachers, brought in special ed teachers, brought in a board member to be on that committee task force to see, to problem solve and look at different options that could be out there, what the district could do. Typically, you do have some children who are at childcare centers, some are at the one in Lincoln and other areas, and the related service people do go to those centers to give the services to the kids, the kiddos. It's usually speech and language, or OT, or whatnot, something like that. And they can support the childcare centers. Other times, the parents bring the kids in to the, to the building. Right now in the elementary, you have some playgroups going on based on the needs of the students. And the parents bring them in for an hour, they do their playgroup, you know, with the special ed, and then they, and then the parents come and pick them up. So, but that, that's a continuing thing, because they do have to come up with some type of a.
Some kind of plan?
Yeah, different type of plan.
I guess my concern is that I found about it in the streets, and I just didn't know that we were building a group with representative from the board.
Yeah.
And maybe I'm, maybe that's not necessary that we know.
Well, if we're going to have a task force, and it's going to usually bring in all the stakeholders, so we do have.
I know, but like, how did we, how did we get, did you get offered a job?
No, no, I didn't get offered a job.
I said, how do we, how do we end up with Jasmine on it?
Typically, the board should make that decision, I would think.
Because I thought we had to like vote to create the biomass committee and have it as a charge, but this committee just came about without our discussion. At least I, unless I missed that discussion.
I'd have to go back in the minutes, and I, I thought it was discussed.
No, we talked about it. Because I remember Jasmine being the best fit for it.
Right.
Okay, so I might have just missed it?
I'll go back in the minutes.
I don't remember either.
I don't remember that.
That's all right, I'll.
I remember having some surface discussions about preschool, but I don't remember ever forming or determining.
But this isn't, and this isn't a task force to talk about a preschool, this is just how the best.
Well, they're going to come back to the, according to this, they're going to report to the superintendent, then come back to us with recommendations.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
But I didn't give them any kind of, we didn't give them anything to look at.
Yeah, I think, I think they're just doing what.
Right.
The school always does is figure out how to service those preschoolers when they come into kindergarten. They probably already always had this task force, I think the board member thing on it is a new thing.
Bring in more, right, right. Bring in more people.
That's fine.
Are they going to be looking at like, you know, what sort of potential staffing or budgetary consequences that having 10 kids that, when we usually have two, that that might entail? I mean, it seems like that's sort of a.
The budget has already been done, so what we do for next year is, we will be able to, we'll service the kids with the same budget we have now.
Yeah.
In preschool, you don't, it's not like kindergarten or the upper grades. Preschool is, is it individualized service, only services only. So you would have, it's called individual service provider, ISP. And what happens is, is that the child only receives the services that they're, they have weak areas in, so it's, it's usually not necessarily, we'll eventually get to academic if we don't, you know, get those services under control, or the, so for example, speech, if you know a child is having difficulty talking, or some has some type of a speech impediment, or a speech disability, then the sooner you find it out, we get recommended, they get recommended through the pediatrics division and, and social services recommend to the school districts that when the children are 18 months old, and then, so we can budget. We know when they're going to be three, or two and a half, we can budget and we can see them coming. But in two and a half, we start the assessment process, because by the time they're three, they need to be receiving services if it's necessary. So we only pinpoint a half-hour, two days a week, you know, type of thing, and only that service only, and then they, service only, and then they leave, you know, and they're not, we don't have a big huge three-hour, four-hour program for everybody.
So, so do we, we, did you have a follow-up question?
I, I did, but it's, you can go forward.
So as part of this task force then, if, so from what I just heard, this is, these are kids that are coming into the preschool program now that are being identified, that aren't necessarily coming into our school right now.
Correct.
So are we, is this task force then also tasked with projecting forward? If the services are such at preschool, what does that service look like when they actually enter the school building in the school district? And are they the same types of programs? Or do we need to start to project for in two or three years that we're going to need, we're going to have an influx of this type of service that's going to be required? We need to be prepared for that.
Well, right, I mean, if you're, the kiddos are coming in at three years old, so by the time, so next year, we may have some four-year-olds, so we're going to be, we're going to be budgeting next year for our four-year-olds coming into kindergarten. We'll have a clear, you know, idea of what the needs will be. Hoping that if we get them early enough, by the time they do get in, it will be the services.
You can mitigate some of it.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, we'll already have taken care of some of those things. Some of them are developmental, and they, as they start off, you think that they really have the intense needs, but then developmentally, as they develop, they tend to catch on and sometimes they, with the therapy that they need, that we can give them, that they can, anything that's going to interfere with learning or a life, you know, skill, then that's what we, we focus in on, whether it be the speaking, or the, you know, the walking, or the motor control, and that's what they start with. So there is a, you know, particular screenings that we do have to do for kiddos like that, but having nine all at the same time come into the district all at once is something that was not planned. So just have to look at a different way of approaching it, you know, for now, and see what we can, see what we can do.
Do you have another question, Jenny?
No, that's essentially my question, was, is it being used as a tool to project future costs? And it sounds like it is.
Yeah, it always is.
And I don't think there are any other committees to speak of?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
On March 21st, the wellness committee held their second slow cooker night. And I couldn't attend that one, but, or the one before, actually, but the, it sounds awful. or the one before, actually, but the, it sounds awful.
There's one tonight, also.
But there's one tonight as well, actually, but obviously.
Then you're not attending.
That I'm not attending.
I just went at eight.
Tonight, they're doing frittatas, um, and last, and the last one that they had went really, really smooth, they nailed it down. I got the email that they nailed down their procedure. And then, uh, the next one after tonight is on the eighteenth, April, so, seems to be really successful.
That's another board meeting, though, but that's, cause we changed the.
Right, I wouldn't be at that one either.
I was hoping you'd be bringing us back some good slow cooker recipes and demonstrate for us.
Oh, well, if, if you miss next meeting, it's squash bean soup.
Yeah, I don't need that one.
Can I, can I go back to the preschool, something just caught my eye? Can you define for me what the least restrictive environment is?
Yes, the least restrictive environment, it has to be the environment where they have the least, least amount of support. You have to start with the least amount of support first, and then, if you find that they need more support, then you add support.
Okay.
But you can't add all the support first.
You let the, the, whatever it is dictate.
Right.
Levels, okay.
And, and, and so that, in a, in a classroom, looks like classroom teacher supports the child and individual programming and, and whatnot, and, and small group within the classroom. Then the next would be to have somebody, a special educator or whatever, come in and help within the classroom.
Supports that, yeah.
You know, and then it just keeps building from there.
All good? Let me give you a minute?
No, no, I'm good.
Is the other end of that spectrum educational placement?
Uh, the most, the most intense placement is hospitalization. So, even resident, we've had residential, but then even the more so is, is hospitalization from that, and that's the most restrictive. Then, then going down from that, you would have your residential, then you would have your day program outside of the school district, and then you would have your day program within the school district for the local services, fifteen hours, or, or, between fifteen and thirty hours a week is what special ed would need to be in, and then you would go down from there, from the hours.
Alright, thanks. Um, moving on, business requiring board action, so the first thing on that part of the agenda is the ethics review, which I think we just, you discussed briefly, was. As far as the review, it's just a matter of us filling out, uh, reading the policies and signing it.
Yes, reading it, being familiar with it, and, um, signing off on it.
Okay. So, if everybody wants to do that and hand them to me by the end of the meeting, I'll sign away.
Do you have, I have an extra copy. I can come by the office.
I do have an.
Okay.
It should be in your blue folder.
It's in this thing, too.
The signature page is in your blue folder.
Put the actual policies in here, isn't it?
But the actual, yeah. Yeah, don't take it out of your white note.
Yeah.
I thought that it was, it was in here.
Yeah, policies.
It's in here.
And there's also a copy in your binder, just so we have a future reference.
So, moving on to committee assignments, uh, so we have a number of committees that we have to have board representation for. Um, obviously, the, there are a number of standing committees that are the board committees, are the two biggest ones that meet most often, are policy and facilities.
Can I, just before we start?
Yep, absolutely.
Jasmine, um, messaged me today, obviously she's not here, um, she's happy to be on wherever we need her, but she, she said her interest still lies in policy and wellness.
Good.
So, if she had a choice, she would stand policy and wellness.
Yeah. I was gonna ask, she communicated that to you, cause I think she's a, policy is a great place for her.
Yep.
For us. So, I'll put, uh, Mr. Dugay on the spot first, as I mentioned him before the meeting, that if he had a passion for one or the other, I feel like as a new board member, it's kinda nice to be one of those two committees, it gives you a little more insight to the workings of the board, feel a little more connected, um, we only need to have two on each one, sometimes we have three, three's the max, otherwise we get to a quorum. Uh, you know, I think this past year we had three on each, and I think we've had pretty good representation there. Um, I'm assuming, before I ask Jay if he wants to be on one of them, I'm not gonna put any pressure on you to be on one of them. Uh, Brian, I imagine you want to stick with facilities? You can, you can say no.
I'll, I'll stay there.
You can, alright. I, I am, yeah.
Also, in your, in your binder, there are descriptions for your standing, um, committees, in case anybody wanted to.
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, policy, B E D, B D E, uh.
Jay, the ball's in your court.
Um, I'll, I'll do policy.
You wanna do policy? Great.
I'll do negotiations again.
We're not there yet, Erin.
Oh, I thought we were jumping around.
But I will.
No, we were just giving Jay open option, now we're back to.
Oh.
You're last.
Um, so as far as policy, so there's one more spot on policy, and I was serving there, I would stay there unless somebody else wants to do it, but I also, I would have an interest in going back to facilities where I was prior to last year. Um, and Vance, you were on policy?
I was thinking of going back to facilities, but I can do either one.
I just wanna be with you, Brian.
Yeah.
Oh, we have not determined that yet.
Oh.
Um, does anybody else wanna be on the policy? Erin, do you have any interest in serving on that, or no? Okay. Alright, so before it goes to Matthew, I'm gonna call you Matthew all the time.
Yes, yeah, jeez.
So, you were on facilities this past year.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to stay in facilities.
Okay, so we'll keep the consistency there, so Matt and Brian will stand facilities, so Vance will join facilities as well?
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
And I will stay on policy with Jasmine and Jay.
Those committees meet one hour a month, and it's the, it's the hour right before the meeting, so policy will meet the first meeting of the month from five-thirty to six-thirty, and then, uh, facilities will meet the second meeting of the month.
Uh, moving down the list, you know, transportation is next.
I might as well just stay with it.
Brian's got it?
I don't think we need more than one person.
I don't think so either, it's, it's one of those that doesn't.
Information on one.
Right, right.
I think we met twice, like, there was really nothing to need about.
As needed.
Yeah, I wanted to keep having trucks.
Right. Uh, negotiations, so as you said earlier, we have to have two, it's nice to have a third to at least serve as an alternate, or, I think all three could attend, correct?
Yeah, we, we did, we almost did.
Yeah, so obviously, Matt and myself are excluded from serving on that, as we have spouses directly related to that. Um, so we have two other spots on negotiations, that Erin already.
Negotiations usually starts around, um, mid-September, and, um, kinda late afternoon, around four, four, four-thirty, and it usually runs a couple of hours each time they meet, and I'd say about six times. That's about right.
So, Erin's on it?
Erin's on it, and Erin did it last time, too. Um, four, thirty's probably tough for you, right?
Yeah, I don't think I could do that schedule-wise, cause I don't get back in the town till around five or six.
I, I shouldn't do it, I don't, I don't know that I can't do it.
Well, no, I, sure, but.
I guess, I'll, I'll do my best, if we could get, maybe see if Jasmine can do it, too, just cause that's tough sometimes, I don't know what days it meets, and I usually start work at three in the afternoon, so.
Jasmine, Brian.
So, like, I mean, I could, I could be like the extra, but hopefully Jasmine, you know, can fill that blank.
No interest, Vance?
I, no.
Yeah.
I just don't think it.
As a teacher, you don't.
As a teacher in a different district, it doesn't look good.
Understandable, so we'll ask Jasmine if she wants to be that with Brian as the alternate?
Yeah, I'd do my best, it's just September, who knows?
When we ask scheduling meetings, they do wait till everybody's there, so you can, you can look at your schedule and say so.
If Jasmine doesn't want to, I, I would be the third person, the alternate, but.
Okay.
But let's see if we can go with Erin, Jasmine, Brian.
Uh, the budget rep, um, I think most of us have experience serving on that role at some point, or being in the budget committee as Jay was. So, as you know, how many, how many meetings do we have this year? I mean, a couple of work sessions, and then, and then budget committee meets on their own, where our budget rep sits in, kinda is that conduit between the board and the budget committee.
I, I sat in for Erin once this year, and I actually liked the, the process, so if no one's interested, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. Vance, it is? Uh, school board association rep, did we have one this past year?
I don't know if we did.
I think we, last time Jasmine wasn't here, first meeting, so we gave it to her, but.
Oh, she's not here.
She's not here, so, and I think that's, that's one of those that, I mean, you can get into the, you know, we, we get all the emails, so we stay pretty current.
Yeah, usually if I catch an email that, you know, I think it's gonna have, really have an impact on, on the district, I bring it forward, and you, you will be getting emails from New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Right.
Uh, and getting all the same information than I get, but I, I tend to bring some of it to the board, uh, board's attention. There is a, um, a responsibility of that rep to go to one meeting in January, and it talks about all of the different, um, laws and the, and the procedures that the New Hampshire School Board is going to support, the association is gonna support, and, and boards across the state bring up issues and concerns that they have, that they want to have changed at the legislative, uh, level, and, um, and then they bring them all together in, in January and discuss it as an association. We have to send them in, you know, in, in late fall, and then the association, um, goes through them and, and, and whatnot, and then, and sets it all up, so that you can, they're presented in, in January. And it's, it's usually on a Saturday, that meeting is on a Saturday. I think you'd get a br, a breakfast and lunch out of it.
I'm in.
Matt? Does anybody have any interest in that?
I, I'll do it on, I'll do it.
You wanna? Okay, I was, I was gonna say, we could, we could give it to Jasmine again, and if she doesn't wanna do it, I would step in and do it, but.
Yeah, I'll do it, I, I plan to go down there for another training on strategic planning.
Right.
That sort of thing, so.
Okay, perfect. So, that takes care of our standing committees, we're on the school district committees, so these are committees that are made up of faculty and, and admin to focus on different aspects of the school, um, and we always have one budget rep there, I mean, budget board rep there, uh, to kinda keep us in touch with what's going on. Professional development, some, one of us was serving on that already?
That's, yeah, I'm on that committee now, um, happy to stay, happy to give it up if someone else has a passion for it.
Yeah, and I think a lot of these, too, um, they end up meeting either during the school day, right after the school day.
Can be difficult.
Which can be difficult for people, you know, I've got a flexible work schedule, Matt has pretty flexible, or can make it flexible, um. So, if Matt, if you're happy to.
Yeah, no, I'm fine, I'm fine to stay there.
Okay.
That works.
Um, technology, yeah, I've served on that committee for the last three or, oh, probably four years, I'm happy to continue doing so unless somebody else wants to jump in. Alright, I'll continue to be the tech geek, that was once called.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I have a hard time with any of these, just because.
Yeah, cause you're an hour away.
Yeah, I work almost an hour away.
Yeah. You could schedule them really early for you, Vance.
Yeah, or maybe if they meet.
Before school.
Six-thirty, seven.
Right.
Well, first, does food service meet fairly early?
They can, sometimes.
Like, I might, could do that one.
Services, it's usually like when we meet with cafe services, and probably in the middle of the day.
Uh, so it's during business day? Okay, well, I forget that.
Okay. So, risk management, I think that's me, right?
Yeah, and that meets quarterly, just, we go, does walkthroughs.
Right, right.
You know, what's up.
Have a hard time keeping risk management, or, or, emergency management, safety committee.
Risk management follows the workers' comp laws.
Yeah, yeah. And again, we usually meet right at the end of the school day, so, I'm fine, continuing on with that. Linwood Coalition for Healthy Communities, and this really isn't one of ours so much, it's just, it's, right, it's more of the community and different, heads of different departments meet, and, community-based, but we've always had a rep there, I've done it in the past, now Erin's been doing it, right?
Yeah, I'll continue.
You wanna continue with that? Okay. Food service?
Who was on this year?
John was on.
John was on, I think, right.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any equipment needs that come up, usually, and then, anything with cafe services, usually we'd have the food service person come to our meeting, and we usually meet with cafe services at the end of the year, but then again, and if we had any equipment needs come up, they would come in and look at that, and, so that's, it's really not too many meetings.
Okay. And again, those are probably like mid-afternoon meetings.
Yeah, just the one with cafe services, any other time, if we're, if we're looking at equipment or whatever, it's during budget season, you can go in anytime.
Okay.
And do that.
I'll, I'll do it.
Erin's in? Sick bank.
I can do that one.
Cause it's the one that meets the least?
I mean, actually, I was on it last, not this past year, the year before, we met quite a few times.
Did you?
But they were always before school started.
Before, okay.
It's part of the, uh, LWEA agreement, that we have a rep.
What is it? It's in case someone, if there's an extended injury, illness, and someone needs to be out more than needed, there's a bank of sick days that teachers have donated, so if you run out of personal sick days, you can access the bank.
Just have a process of the.
Alright, so Vance for sick bank, uh, Jasmine will continue with wellness, uh, and then our emergency management.
When does that meet?
Yeah, there's one coming up. Yeah, that is coming up, um, that meets in the morning, usually around nine, cause that's outside agencies, it's a fire and police.
How often?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, probably, yeah.
I'll, I'll do that, and then, looking forward to this year, I think there's a lot of crossover with.
I think that's a major facility kinda tie.
Cause then, with all the funding that we got, and all the grants, I mean, I think, I feel like that's.
That would be perfect.
Gonna be most of the conversations going this year, so.
Yeah. I think I've been serving on that one, so.
There's another, there's a meeting next, next Monday.
Next Monday?
You available?
Next Monday.
If there's any meeting you can't make, I would sit in on, now, I'd like, you know, continue on with that. So, cut that out of the way. Our goal-setting meeting date. I think every year, as a school board, we set our goals, what we want to achieve, or have the district achieve throughout the year, um. I guess we throw some dates out there and who, what works for everybody, what, I don't know what we did in the past, do the.
Maybe do a Wednesday that we're not.
No, Wednesday that we're not having a board meeting.
Right.
Board meeting schedule.
We need it for next, for next school academic year, right?
Yeah.
This is for the current, yeah, the current year we're starting right now.
We're setting our goals for next year, right?
Totally for eighteen, nineteen.
Right, school year, right, but what we are, yeah.
The evaluation is what we're in now.
So, is that something everybody feels we wanna do sooner rather than later, or look for an open date in May?
I'd actually prefer to delay it.
More towards the end of the school year, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, and, and I'm responsible for this just as much as anybody as a school board member, I think a lot of the stuff that we've set as goals is kind of generic, and we've kinda regurgitated the same thing over and over. I'd like to attend the strategic planning, uh, workshop down at the school board association, and then maybe come back with some ideas and have some more high-level goals that are involved with creating a board-level strategic plan.
What date is that on? Is it in here?
I thought it was in here, it's not in here. I, I thought it was end of May, maybe.
Is that, uh, Donna Concord?
Yeah. It could be June, it, can we just push that off and make a decision next meeting? That way we can look up when.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I mean, there's no rush, right?
Revisit that in the next meeting?
Unless, you know.
No, I don't think there's any, any major rush to set our goals, like you said, it's, it seems every year we're mostly rehashing the goals that we've come with from the year before, so it might be nice to have some new info and take a fresh look at it. So, staff nominations and resignation, Stu, do you have anything for us in that department?
I have a nomination. It is our.
Not yet, no, the next meeting will set them, you need it.
It is, it is one person, but we, I'm nominating her for two different positions.
Okay.
So, her name is. So, her name is Jessica Hallm, H-A-L-M. And she will be the middle school math teacher, long-term sub. She will be taking the place of Sarah Kraus from April vacation until the end of the school year.
Did you say there was two positions for her?
Yes. The next position will be a, for a full-time position, for high school math teacher for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, replacing Rick Baker.
Is she gonna do this a while?
Yes, she's been doing it for a long time, and she is, has a master's degree, she's on step five. She has her colleges, her Cornell University and, and PSU for her master's, you can pass that around. And there was a committee that went through the process of, of the hiring process. And all the information is on the paper that's being passed around now.
So do you get a lot of applicants for both the long-term sub and?
We have seven, we have seven applicants for the, seven applicants for the high school position. We interviewed three, the, the committee went through the seven applications and chose three. We had three interviews, the committee, we had, we had a couple teachers, two teachers, guidance counselor, myself, and a student rep that made up the committee. They came to kind of like consensus of who they wanted to, wanna put forward. It just so happens that the, Jessica is currently, she is, she had just chosen for a personal reason to stay home this year for taking care of her kids. And so with that, we looked at as an opportunity to kinda get her, her feet on the, kinda after we had offered the position, the high, the full-time position, that we kind of looked at, had it as an opportunity, maybe we can get her in there a little earlier, kinda get her a running start. The second part did not lead to one of the reasons to, for the full-time position, but it was kind of an added benefit that we thought made sense.
Sure.
Where was she working at last?
White Mountains.
Just not working there currently.
She was, yeah, she would stake, she took this, you were off to take care of her. She came highly recommended from White Mountains.
Name was what again?
Jessica Hallm, H-A-L-M. She was also a long-term sub here in two thousand three, four.
Oh, really?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination of Jessica Hallm for the middle school math long-term substitute and for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, uh, full-time high school math teacher.
Second. Any discussion? Everybody's looked over the resume, any more questions for admin? Hearing none, all in favor of hiring Jessica Hallm as the long-term math, middle school math teacher for the duration of this school year and then the high school math teacher for the eighteen, nineteen school year? Signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, abstentions? And that passes?
And staff nominations on the non-public?
Mr. Courier, school board calendar, or, or school calendar, I hear that's your department.
Uh, yes, so I do apologize for bringing this back. There's just one change I wanna bring your attention to. In the month of March, I would like to request to move the Teacher in Service Day from the twenty-second of March to March twelfth. One of the things that kinda came up after, I know we voted on the calendar this last go-around, that we have, you know, we had, I know we have some, could be doing some upgrades as far as for safety through the grant that we just received over the course of this past year. I'd like to move that, that day to have our in-service day to the day of, of voting. Just because, you know, we had, you know, we were just kind of thinking about it, you know, we had this conversation, we talked about the, you know, the money that's coming in, what the upgrades we're gonna be doing, and then a few days later, we have voting, our kids are here, and we open our building all the way open. So, you know, just as a quick thing, you know, we had.
It was probably slightly disruptive to the school day.
Well, we're, you know, it's, it's one of those things, like, you know, we have, we're gonna put locks and all these things, but on the same line, so we're eating lunch in the gym, and then here comes this person, that person, just coming on in. So I just, it just kind of, I think, kind of, we're kind of moving towards, if we can kind of make a slight change to make sure that up, I think that might be a smart move.
Yeah, I think that makes sense on a lot of levels, you know, as far as when you think about voting day and how it disrupts the kids as far as, and the work that's created for service staff, moving everything into the gym and moving PE classes out of there.
Yep.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense to, to have those coincide on the same day.
I'll make a motion to amend this Linwood Public School two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen calendar to reflect the change, the March twelfth for the person, the professional development.
Well, second.
Or in-service.
Yes. Second from Brian. Hearing no further discussion, I'll accept the vote, accept the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes, abstentions?
The one that we got in the packet is the corrected count?
Yes. Done, all right. We'll hold you to it, Mr. Courier.
The school board meeting ones are just, they're set right now, but I mean, they certainly can change at any time depending. Sometimes they end up getting changed during, during the course of the year for different reasons, so.
And we should vote on approving that though, right? Yeah. And I think, you know, so we're still on the Wednesdays, every second and fourth Wednesday, for the most part until we hit summer or we run into any holidays, and as Judy said, we can change as we did this year to get to in this month. If everybody's had a chance to look at that, I'll accept a motion to approve the school board meeting calendar for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Mr. Dugan, second?
Second.
From Mr. Manning. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes, abstentions, and we're good. Next item is rules of non-public session slash procedures for effective board meeting and policies, let's refer to our binder.
Yeah, these are all in your, in your packet. I just wanted to bring your attention to them, and if anybody wants to, you know.
The packet or the binder?
I'm sorry, binder. Rules of non-public session, the basic rules, anything that's spoken in non-public stays in non-public. You can have, you know, minutes sealed, you know, although this hasn't happened since I've been here.
And we sealed.
Probably should be every time we talk about a child.
We did, we did seal minutes. A couple meetings ago.
They do?
Yeah, oh, right, because it was, yes.
Yeah, because of that reason, yeah. And that's the first time I remember doing it, but.
So, you know, there are rules that the board needs to go by when they're, when they're doing that.
So just become familiar with this.
Yeah, I would. Effective board meetings, I mean, you, you have the gist of what, what the process and procedure is.
Yeah.
Board meetings. And then the policies that we follow.
Yeah, I think as far as the policies go, for Jay's benefit, I don't know if you've seen these, they're all online, all on the school board website.
Is it on the, the one, the, the school board only, because I don't have access to that yet?
Okay.
No, it's not.
It's not, it's on the?
No, it's on the school board page, but right on there, there's a tab that says policies, anyone can get to that.
Okay, yeah. So just searching through all these paper copies to look things up again, they're always right there. So we have any questions about the binder, or? All right, the elementary tanks, so I think this refers to our oil tanks that we've been told need to be replaced at some point? And where we're gonna go with that, or?
Tied in with the biomass.
Tied in with the biomass, yeah.
And so that would be something where, you know, if you'd want the facilities committee to review all of that and then come forward with a recommendation to the board, with the different options that are out there. You know, that may be something that the board would wanna go with.
Okay.
And we will, we will be having to communicate with the state, you know, as far as the tanks go and, and the process that we're following and, and what the board is, is gonna be moving forward with.
Is there, is there a date that we need to communicate that to them?
Soon.
I, yeah.
We just have to give them a plan, we've been updating them all along.
So our next update is coming soon.
Okay.
When we work with Wayne Fillion, I mean, he gave us the report, I think, that was shared with everyone back in March. There's some options on there, but he also said, he, you know, he's worked with the state with, with cases like this, so he can help us. We basically just have to say, okay, here's our, here's our new, here's our next steps and the plan and.
As long as the state sees that the board is, the district is moving forward, you know, they seem to be pretty good with timelines.
Cause it might be, might mean that we need to wait till the next annual meeting for the next step, if we're gonna.
Right. Right, cause we'll need to vote.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll have that on the, or facilities will have that on their agenda for next meeting. And come back on the meeting two weeks from now and see where we're headed. No, one other thing I made note here of requiring board action was the biomass committee.
Right.
So as we discussed earlier, we gave a charge to the committee, that's been followed through, so the committee is no longer necessary. So with that said, I will accept a motion to dissolve the biomass committee.
Make a motion.
Matt, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That has passed. New business, the roof bids.
We just got them yesterday, I mean.
They're good for thirty days, right?
Yeah, our intention was to get them into the packets, cause that's what we had discussed like last fall.
Right.
Unfortunately, because of the snow and everything, we had to reschedule the, the pre-bid meeting twice. So, yeah, we just wanted to give everyone copies now and then, probably have the facilities committee meet on them. But we, we will need to put it on the agenda soon to.
Did the initial report, they didn't bid the job, the guy that came and presented to us?
He, he's not a contractor.
Oh, I thought he represented a company.
He represents the company, the, the product, that.
Yeah, he just represents the product.
The process, but he's not a roofing contractor.
Oh, they just do, but I thought he was like a.
He was just describing the process of, of that product.
So he said he, they oversee the stuff and?
They'll, they'll oversee it because it's their product, that he's, he's warranting for forty-five years. Yeah, forty-five years. So he oversees the projects, because if it's not put on right, it's his warranty.
So regardless of who we give the bid to?
He's pretty much the clerk of the work for the, a job like that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not anything extra, but he's there because he wants to make sure that warranty's.
Did any of these guys throw any good questions at you? Or do you think, like, just as an example, the guys from Leaning Way just threw a number at us?
Which one's that, oh, the, the big number?
Well, there is a, a big spread between them.
I mean, is this all the same?
Three of them are. Melanson's bid is a different product.
Okay.
And the other three are based on pretty much.
Oh, right, so this is, we got one eighty, one forty, and two forty, and then this one, and then Maggie.
I feel like the two forty one is the guy that doesn't want to work, so if you give him two hundred and forty thousand, he'll start on it. He'll start in the little gym.
Right.
Yeah, the other thing is, and you can look through it, but they, they said it's, it's not a big project, a project. So, and depending on how far they traveled and, you know, that might have drove up the cost of some of them, but the others are pretty competitive.
Jay, the estimated number was in that, like, one fifty range.
Yeah.
That's what I remember from the logic.
Yeah, so like, you, you can see that there's, there, there's a tightness in that, minus the guy that changed the stuff, and then I feel like that other guy's the one that, you wanna build a house for you, I'll build a house, it's gonna cost you four hundred thousand, I'll start this week.
Yeah. And this is, um, the, I mean, the, the ones that are all the same essentially are, um, like a complete replacement of the roof? Like a do-over, is that?
It's taking it down to the tectum, like above our heads.
Yeah.
So stripping down to that, that, that's the roof deck?
Yeah.
And building from there.
So basically, a do-over.
Complete do-over.
And what's the Melanson talking about?
Melanson's is the same thing, but it's a different covering, basically, right? EPDM membrane?
Well, that's rubber membrane.
Yeah.
I think.
That's the biggest difference.
They're just not using the same product.
Yeah, it looks like twenty-five a year.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, they're at a twenty-five year, it's fifty-five mile an hour wind protection, which is softer than everybody else. I think the other product is, what, forty-five or forty years? I don't, and it's not listed here, I'm trying to do it out of my head.
Right, and they also have the, the other, or you could have the, um.
It's up there, and then they have a high wind on it. It, it's like better, like up in like seventy mile an hour, eighty mile an hour, or something like that.
Is this like a spray-on product?
No.
Expensive ones?
Like rolled, rolled roofing.
So even the, the more expensive version is a rolled roofing?
Yeah. The product that was presented to us was like a rolled rubber roofing. Then the feeling is that, I mean, it just gets you up, Jay, I guess it's a, you know, if they do this, it, it doesn't get us into these codes. Going back like to this time last year, there was a big discussion about how to get certain ratings for the building. To do that was like a million and a half.
That's the, making it a shelter, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So that would be like putting in new steelwork and then finding out that the concrete walls don't have reinforcement because they didn't need it back in the day. So, when we find, when we finally got away from that, it, any, all these processes here, no matter which one we choose, will still require a monitoring system. Not an expensive monitoring system, but a monitoring system nonetheless. So, the simple stakes in the ground or however they, they do it on the roof, you know, to just show depth, basically. You know, you just keep an eye on it, and when it's too much snow, you go shovel it. But to, doing it this way, which was not presented to us as of a year ago, is stripping it down. The number is like pretty huge, the amount of weight that they think is up there. This is like, they did it stone over, like they did foam over, then stone that, like that was the first roof probably, foam, rubber, stone, stone protecting, then they just built on top of it again, making up the head.
Yeah. Does this include any like additional or insulation, I guess? That's, that's, it seems like that's a huge roof, and if we're stripping it down, we're not upgrading insulation.
We're not upgrading the insulation, however, the, the building does heat the roof, because that's the way the building was designed back in the day.
To melt it?
To melt the.
Gotcha. Oh, I guess that makes sense.
Cause when they built it, oil was cheap.
Right.
It's only ten times as expensive.
Yeah. So it didn't matter.
I mean, there's a good chance that the material, I mean, the, I mean, you know how it goes with foam insulations now. I mean, I'm sure it's a better product than was up there before. The best we can do with the money we have, I think, and I think it solves the problem of who's leaking out for it.
Yeah. There was a cer, there was an amount appropriated last year that's been encumbered, and then there was another amount appropriated this year.
Vote to encumber that before the end of the year, ninety-five thousand dollars.
That was last year?
Yeah.
And then it was another seventy or something?
Seventy for this year, or an article?
So, the one eighty bid, so basically we only have enough money to do two of these bids. So we're, we're stuck with the lesser product or the low bidder on the other product?
I don't know if we're stuck with the low bidder.
Well, I, I just, it's always been my experience that the, the, the high bidder's shooting for the moon, like Brian says. The low bidder's either leaving something out or planning to fork you somehow.
Yeah.
And then, and, and the guy in the middle's usually your best, your best option, that's just been my.
We've had some instances over the years where the, I can't remember the product, we got a single-page, I don't know, five sentence bid on something that was absolutely through the moon, the highest bid we had, it didn't really have any serious scope of the work. So, you know, on occasion, sometimes I wonder why certain people bid, they just said to send it, that's it.
They all have got the same information, we can, I mean, we can also get references on any of these.
And I imagine they were, they were presented with the same.
Oh, yeah, they all came.
Scope of work that's expected.
They all came to the pre-bid meeting and got the same documents.
Who's the company that, didn't you say one of them's done work here before?
Melanson.
Melanson, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, the chief guys. Oh, the chief guys.
Mm-hmm.
They weren't very successful last time, I don't think. Do they do this roof?
No.
At elementary school?
This is metal roof. They don't do metal.
They don't do metal?
No.
I think we've had good luck with this.
Yeah, he's done all the, uh, two, three out of the four insulation jobs down there at the high school. Done a good job.
Just let me know whenever we get to the guy that did the metal roof in the future, we'll skip him.
He's probably not in business anymore.
Uh, well, if, if everybody can just take a look at it, I guess, and, um, we'll discuss it next week. Right?
Next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me discuss that with the facilities committee.
Jay, feel free to bring up any concerns.
Well, I'm, I'm just like, we don't really have many options if we're, it's, we're essentially choosing Melanson or this, the lowball, and that concerns me.
Yeah.
And it's not like it's five grand, it's forty. You know, that's a lot of money. I don't know if that can necessarily be explained just by travel costs.
We can get the, um, the initial estimates too, that we had on, on the roof and the, and the life cycles and all that of this product and.
I mean, they're both coming from the same place essentially.
Yeah, and I think you can't, like you said, you can't put it all on travel costs, but some people, as you know, will bid based on the inconvenience of their travel.
Sure.
You know, and it's not so much, I'll charge you this much per mile to bring my guys up there, it's, well, if I utilize that time to do more jobs closer to home.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at, I mean, one's coming from East Hampton, one's coming from a filling.
Yeah.
I mean, East Hampton's a little further, but not, not that much.
They all saw it.
They did the presentation.
Garland, cause it's that product.
It's the product, it's not the.
And again, he, there was, in that presentation, there was a whole.
These guys aren't bound by a product.
I mean, he est, he estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this job initially. Um, and there's the whole life cycle cost analysis, so we can pull that report back out.
So these guys aren't necessarily using the Garland product?
Those guys are.
They are?
Melanson is not.
Melanson is not.
Okay. But, so we're gonna be, every one of these is gonna be, uh, uh, in theory, an identical installation?
Yes.
And Garland was just one of the forms.
So maybe, Jay, maybe worthwhile to get a copy of the report. Jay hasn't seen the report that Garland did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
But I think that might be helpful.
There was, I, I mean, at least, mm, I guess, introductively familiar from some discussions that we had in the budget committee, but, um, and there was some knowledgeable folks there.
No, it would've been nice if they were closer, I agree.
Yeah, it's just, you know, that's something that, that's a lot of money to, to be different, and there, what's the reasoning? Why is it, what's the? I mean, is that all you get from their bid? It's just a number? You don't get like a, here's the breakdown?
Times less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, they all use the same.
Right, they're looking at the same scope of work, right.
But once, if, if we ask them to put together a contract, I mean, before we sign that, they, they would have the list.
Breakdown.
Breakdown, every, you know, line item by line, and what we're getting and, and all of that.
Yeah.
As opposed to just the, the number.
I mean, there's one comfort in the Garland company wants to send representatives to watch, right?
Yes.
Protect their product, like, they will stand behind their product.
Did we get, are these guys that were people that were recommended by Garland, or like, said, hey, these are the people that install our products, or is that?
Um, some, I mean, yeah, some of them were on, yeah.
Okay.
We knew some of these guys, cause they've done.
Do you think he's willing to give us a, you know, like, hey, this guy's forty thousand less because we've had some?
We can get some references.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get some.
Well, I think from his presentation too, he would, if he, no, I think if we show, let him know the companies that had put bids in, he would let us know whether they've had success with them.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that was the question, like, does he willing to let us know that?
Yeah, I, from, if I can.
The way he spoke, I, like.
He wants to be involved in the process.
Like, they, before they put their stamp on their, their product and their procedure, it seemed like they're pretty concerned about not having their product be the lacking part. They don't wanna have that bad press of putting a bad roof on it from a product standpoint.
Yeah.
I mean, it could just be, if you guys could reach out to him and see if he's worked with.
He could probably come back in and talk to you.
Yeah, well, I mean, either way.
Just an email.
I know we're racing against time, I mean, if he just can look at it, maybe it just does a.
Well, cause the, the other piece is too, is that if we don't, if, the sooner that we can get a contract in place, the more likely it is that we can get it done.
Yeah, someone's lying up their job.
Right, that's what I, that's, yeah.
Good thirty days, or most of these expire, which most people would back them for longer than that, however, they also wanna start working.
They could be booking a job right now, too, for, yeah.
You know.
So I guess we'll aim to make a decision on the eighteenth, you know, facilities will come back to the recommendation, I mean, I guess it kind of boils down to the product more than anything, when you're looking at it.
Maybe get some insight from Garland, from that gentleman.
Yeah. And, I mean, if, if you're gonna talk to the Garland rep, maybe see if he has any insight about why they can be so different. I mean, it's a.
Because they all got the same scope of work.
Twenty percent, or, you know?
Yeah, more than that.
A little more than twenty percent difference? That's not insignificant, I'd say. And then, and then there's that guy. That guy's gonna put all those guys up in Riverwalk while they're here, that's right, two thirty-seven. So, yeah, we'll hear back from, so you guys are getting a hefty agenda put together for next facilities meeting? Yep, right. So the next item under new business is support staff.
Uh, and it's something that the board's gonna have to discuss as far as the, um, the process they're going to be using in order to, um, fulfill the budget committee's request.
Sure.
Doing contracts.
And, and we do, we do need to, uh, we'll be sending out those contracts at the latest, June first.
Okay, so we have more time on those than we do, like, teacher contracts, okay.
We're gonna need time to get them ready.
I'd like to make a suggestion, based on our conversation at the budget hearing, when we had the budget hearing, um, that this might be an instance where it might be a benefit to have, put a committee together to work with administration. And I talked to Dev a little bit about this kind of stuff, the assigned manifests. And just, you know, to, to get this kind of chunk of money in a, in a one shot is great, but is there, what are, what are our goals as a board? Do we have a goal to bring all support staff to a, a minimum starting wage of fifteen dollars an hour within the next three years? I mean, what are we gonna do long-term without this, you know, one-time shot of, of money that's, you know, kind of been placed in our hands to say, well, this is what we'd like you to do with it? But through that conversation, we also know that we could be used as a tool in any way that we choose to use it for. And there was a lot of discussion at the, the budget hearing, so I thought that, my opinion is that we should have a committee together for that. And I think Jay should be part of that.
As I say, I'd happily volunteer for that.
So.
Uh, I mean, can at least provide the, the basis of what we were, how we were viewing it?
Yeah, yeah. Right, and then, and then where do we go from here, too?
Sure.
Depending, do we, is, is that what we're gonna do this year, or are we gonna do something different this year with a goal to do something different next year? And get to a certain level for everybody within a certain timeframe or something like that? And, you know, it doesn't have to be a big committee, maybe a couple of school board members and a couple administrators, maybe a couple meetings, do some analysis. That was my thought.
And then, if, if the, if the board could, you know, you get your committee together and then write out the charge, like you did your biomass, you know? And, and then the committee goes to work on it, and then reports back to the board, and it's done.
I mean, I don't mind being part of it either, um, with Jay as a school board rep, or if somebody else wants to do it, that's fine, too.
I'm okay with you guys doing that, we, I mean, we don't have a ton of time. We've got.
My only, my only issue with it is scheduling-wise, it's difficult for me to be available during the day.
It could be six, seven o'clock at night.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, then, I don't, you know, I don't know what year's schedule is, okay.
And I don't, and I don't know that it has to be a heavy lift either, but just, you know, some thoughtful analysis on what it is and what we, where we can move to.
Sure.
Cause it's, it's really has been a complete shift in any direction we've gone over the years, and, and it's awful quick, so, you know, let's, let's be forward-thinking, make sure there's no unintended consequences. And that we're being equitable to, to all people that serve the students, so.
Yeah, I would second that thought, you know, uh, one of the points I made at the budget hearing was that, I don't think we wanna get into the, what I would say, dangerous precedent of the budget, budget committee dictating which individuals get raises. You know, taking out a group of people and saying, we feel that this group is more important than other groups. Um, you know, we have a lot of different, uh, employees that fall under that, support staff, um, you know, there were raises for everybody, and now they want to give, you know, they put this money aside cause they want a small number of people to, to get a twenty-three percent increase in pay compared to the, you know, the three point six percent, or three point three percent, whatever it was, that everybody else is getting. I don't speak for everyone, but I feel like the, the tenor of the room that night was, everybody's in agreement that that section of the support staff, the paraprofessionals, are underpaid and do deserve a raise in pay. I think the administration had come forward with a fifty cent increase per hour across the board for all support staff, and this is on top of that. You know, so whereas the, the budget committee said, we want them to go from fifty cent raise to three fifty an hour raise. And I think it kind of, it, it opens up the, the door to the line of thought that Matt's talking about, where do we ultimately wanna get, um, with our whole, uh, employee staff as far as pay goes? You know, we got this handout at budget time, and I think, again, that, that shows a comparison of what the starting pay is at a lot of neighboring schools. And I think, you, you know, we should be looking at, you know, getting everybody up to not just a, a livable wage or an equitable wage, but it's, I think it'd be great if we kind of set the, the tone of being the highest paid for support staff around. You know, I would like to be part of this committee, or I don't need to be, I have plenty of ideas that I can just throw to you guys and, and you can work with. You know, I'm a math guy, and I broke all this down, and when you look at our support staff, uh, they put in twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one hours. We have twenty-one, twenty-five thousand extra dollars, you know, so the simple math is, let's give everybody an extra dollar raise. And then, you know, if we were to go that route, everybody's getting a dollar fifty an hour raise this year. That then makes our administrative assistants, our custodians, almost our custodians, our paraprofessionals, our tech, secretaries, and our bus drivers, having the highest starting pay of anybody on that cost comparison sheet. But I think it really should be part of a bigger goal. Where do we want all our support staff to be wage-wise? And instead of doing it piecemeal, where it's like, we're gonna give this group three dollars an hour this year, and we'll give this group two and a half next year. I think there's a, a better approach to it that Matt's kind of hammering at, of a, a bigger picture thing. You know, and not create, you know, trying to stay fair, trying to stay equitable, and not create any kind of animosity as far as, you know, because, you know, the, the budget committee, I think, as Matt said, they went in a different direction than most years. And I think they gave us a great tool, I know that's extra money, to use towards paying our staff appropriately. But it ultimately falls upon the school board and admin as far as where that money should be going, and, and we gotta make sure that, you know, we're treating everybody as fairly as possible. And I think this committee's probably a, a step in the right direction, to just have those conversations and, and come up with a bigger plan, and then we can figure out where that money is going by, by June.
And I think it ties into, you know, more long-term planning, more long-term goals, being strategic about the way we do things, instead of, um, you know, just, just kind of being ebbing, ebbing and flowing. Let's have a plan in place, let's see what our benefits look like compared to other districts. I know we have some of that information a little bit, but, uh, you know, look at, look at the whole piece and see where we wanna be. And, and just figure, and, and put a plan in place so that, that it's known, that it's not, this wasn't just a one-year thing. Cause, because that's what the sense I got, too, is that maybe this is a shift in direction, and it's not a, a one-time injection. Maybe we can have more thoughtful conversations during the budgeting process as well with the budget committee, to have these discussions, uh, more openly, cause we haven't in the past.
Well, I, I, I guess, I, I think the characterization as a one-time injection of twenty-five thousand is not necessarily what the budget committee intended.
Right.
And, and it was, it was sort of pitched as a correction to what was seen as an inequity that had sort of been allowed to stand for a while, which, um, was, I said, chronically underpaid support staff and, or chronically underpaid, uh, uh, paraprofessionals. And so the, the idea was, you know, the, the twenty-five thousand would be, you know, whatever it took to get that, that class of, of employees to a reasonable level. Like, that would be there next year. What, it's not like, well, you get fifteen dollars an hour this year, but next year you don't get that.
No, 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 yeah, 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 oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the, what Tony's proposing as far as a dollar an hour, isn't necessarily in the spirit of what the budget committee intended that money to be.
Right.
Um, I think what they intended the money to be was, you know, sort of, the board, or the administration, or somebody has set certain priorities when it comes to support staff. And while all of those bus drivers, secretaries, janitors, and, and paraprofessionals are nominally the, the same category of support staff, they don't do the same jobs, and they're not paid the same, um, for the jobs that they do. So, at some point, somebody along the way has, has set a priority of who is more important financially to the district. At this point, it looks like janitors are more important than, uh, janitors and secretaries are more important than the paraprofessionals.
Right.
And that was an inequity, or that was something that I think the board was looking at, saying, do we agree with that? And the answer was no, I think, uh, across the board, everyone unanimously said, no, we don't think that that is a fair distribution of, of, of wages for those, for that sort of class of, of employees, different classes of employees. So, I mean, certainly, uh, I think probably most of those positions under the support staff heading could use additional funds. But I think the priority of the board was to say, this particular group of, of employees, and this particular type of employee, uh, is, is due for what is in essence a correction. So, it's not like they're getting a three dollar an hour raise every year.
Sure.
But, you know, to get them up to something fair, and then come back to the whatever, fifty cents an hour, or whatever it is that, that the, that the administration seems, or deems fair annually from here on out. But to, to, to give them the bump, and so, I guess the, the spirit of, of, or the intent of that money was not to be sort of an across-the-board bump for everybody, but to be specific to a specific type of employee that does a specific job, and not, you know, a specific person. And I, and, I mean, I understand sort of the, the reticence to, to allow the budget committee to say, this person deserves a raise, this person doesn't. That's not exactly, you know, what they're doing. They're saying, this type of employee doing this particular job is not getting paid enough, here's some additional money to, to fix that.
Right.
Um, and obviously, it's up to the board and the administration how they wanna spend the money, but, um, a, at least from the perspective of somebody who was on the board and, and involved in that decision, I think that's what we were shooting for.
I think that was pretty clear at the.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And I think that's why it's important that you're, you're part of that committee.
Yep.
Cause you have, you know, the, the historical conversations, and I think, um, and I'm not in disagreement with, that, that could be the way we go. I think we also in the spirit of, of, um, being fair, we need to look at everybody that's a support staff and say how, you know, let's, let's make, let's have some sort of plan or some sort of goals to make sure that everybody that works here understands that we're, as a board, that we're looking at everything.
Yep.
So that we can have a plan moving forward, that maybe next year, this is the plan next year, or, or, you know.
Yep.
However it ends up being, but, um, at least do some sort of analysis and some sort of.
Yeah, I totally agree that it always makes sense to have a plan, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'll, I'll second the motion for a committee, I guess, if that's the, on the table.
Yeah, I think, you know, as far as the, you know, the, the spirit of what the budget committee was thinking, I think we all agree with that. I think, but then we get into the real-world part of that, of, you know, you said the budget committee is looking to make a correction, or to make it look, to get them to a, a fair spot in correlation to, you know, the other parts of support staff. As my question would have been for the budget committee, is where, where's the data that supports the need for that correction? Other than we all believe that it should happen, but when I look at the data that, you know, admin, you said, you know, somewhere along the lines, somebody decided custodians should be paid more than paraprofessionals, which, which is happening. That wasn't, I don't think that was something that past administration, current administration, or school board decided, like, hey, we think that custodians are worth more than Paris. It, it's what the data shows, you know, we were given the starting pay for sixteen other schools in the North Country, and on all of them, um, they follow the same guideline. And I'm not saying that, that we need to do that, I mean, if you look at it, you know, the, the starting pay for admin assistants, custodians, secretaries are all higher than paraprofessionals across the board. And whether that's right or wrong, yeah, I will stand here and say it's wrong, absolutely. But I think that, you know, it's a bigger picture thing, where we have to think about how our whole staff is affected by giving out just a blanket raise to, to one part of it. I, I think that as an ultimate goal, and the committee will come up with some kind of ultimate goal, we should be looking at, you know, whether it be a, a fifteen dollar an hour minimum for every part of support staff, if that's the way this, the school board. you know, whether it be a fifteen dollar an hour minimum for every part of support staff, if that's the way the school board wants to go. And like I said, let's lead the charge in being, you know, the, the best paying district when it comes to our support staff and show that appreciation to the support staff. But I still feel like, you know, we set a dangerous precedent by singling out one group. And I understand where, you know, because I've served on the budget committee before, I was on the board as well. And you don't always have all the information of where things originated or how they got to that point. And I think as a board, we don't either, you know, a lot of that has to do with what admin's thinking and the way they're going. And I think budget committee, if you're on the budget committee, you, you understand that you're just, you're giving in a number. And I know people are going to come in, in the meetings after we make the decision, whatever it is, if we don't give the full twenty-five thousand to Paris and yell at us and say, this is not what the taxpayers voted for. But I think, you know, from the beginning, the, the school board was pretty, or school board members at the budget hearing were pretty adamant that we didn't think this was the right way to go. We'll ultimately vote on that as a board, depending on what the committee comes up with. But I think that, you know, for me, I just, I just leave a bad taste when the budget committee says, you're going to put this money here. You know, they, they've done that not just with Paris in the past, they've done that with admin in the past. And it's, it's really gone their scope. My two cents.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to serve on the committee. I'm going to go into it with, with an open mind and, and figure out, I'm not, I've never been a proponent of this is what everybody else is doing, so that has to be what's right. I think we do what's right for us as a district and, you know.
Yeah, so as far as the committee, I'll, I'll remove myself from the committee. No, but I'll remove myself from consideration. That's fine. I think, you know, Jay wants to serve on it. You, you seem to be pretty in tune with it. And if a third board member wanted to, they could.
It could be you. I'm just saying, you know, I just.
No, no.
You know, it doesn't mean.
You didn't explain me one way or the other. I'm just thinking from my standpoint.
As many as we think is needed.
But I think, you know, obviously the administration will be involved in that. And I think if Debbie's for it, you know, being the business administrator and having the longest history here of, of how everything's changed throughout the years, she's, you know, when we talk about data, Debbie has a lot of it, but I haven't been able to look for it a lot of times. So, yeah, I guess, so there's a motion on the table to form a committee to look at the.
Uncontracted staff salaries?
Support staff?
Support staff.
Yeah. You made the motion, I believe.
I think so.
And Brian seconded? Okay.
Jay did.
Jay did. Oh, no, hey. Fran's in charge of keeping track. She's got it. All right. So all in favor of forming that committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? All right. Onto continuing business. We have school board evaluation. Yes? No?
Yeah, you have your evaluation in your packet. And that's something the board usually does on an annual basis. Doesn't necessarily have to be done tonight, but that's just what the evaluation looks like, so you can.
And the school board's evaluating itself.
Itself in the past year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would abstain. Should we, um.
All five.
Should we reach out to John and give him a copy to fill out?
Sure.
I think that would make sense.
Yeah, I think so. Maybe we can have one ready for him in the office and someone can give him a call and let him know he can come pick it up. I'll, I'll call him.
I'll say, you give me his.
You know, this, this document too might be something we want to take a look at when we do our goal setting. I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say, so this New Hampshire School Board Association self-assessment tool.
Yeah.
Was that, have we done that part of it before too?
I don't know that.
We have, no.
Did you just get that?
It was in the packet. These notes, that's a school self-assessment tool.
On this one?
Yeah, this should all be, and it all should be part of the superintendent's rework and that. We should make sure that when we get together to do our goal setting, that part of our goal setting, one of our goals is to reevaluate all of our evaluation tools so that we actually.
Absolutely.
They speak to each other. Just kind of clean it up a little bit.
So just fill those out when we can and get them to Tony?
Yeah.
I think that's Tony's.
You want to say it before?
Next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's two weeks.
By next meeting?
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Yeah. I think we should do the school board association one too.
Okay.
Since it's in here in our packet, I think it's, um, simple and straight.
That's kind of a new one. That's a new form you guys.
Yeah, it's pretty simple and straightforward.
It's one page. Okay.
Fifty-something, fifty-something questions, yeah. Yeah, I might be trying to rework that a little bit.
Five zero?
Yeah.
This, this one? Fifty-four questions. All right. Do we have any other continuing business that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I don't know what, I do, I don't know if this would be the appropriate time or not. I guess it would fall in the continuing business. So a couple of months ago, as a board, we had talked about the school psychology position. We had some conversation at the board level. What would it look like if we brought some of the services instead of being contracted? Is that something we're interested in doing? And we went through that process. And I don't know if, I mean, I sat through the interviews, but I don't know if Scott, if you want to update the, the board on where we're at or.
Sure.
If you want to do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we went through the interview process. We had, had a committee, we interviewed three individuals. The, the committee coming out of it was looking at, you know, kind of, there's none of the three individuals we really wanted to go with. We're looking at kind of continuing our contract with, with NCES for the upcoming school year. That could be, you know, again, a greater discussion we had if we really want to change it to having it remain at four, come up to five days. Have the, you know, the board talk about having it be five days, having school psychologists coverage for the, for all five. If you want to have that conversation. Excuse me?
No, Brad.
So.
More money?
Yeah, we only have enough for the four days, right?
So it's kind of coming out of that, out of that conversation or that process that the committee was looking at.
I have, I have a question. I may have been confused. I, I thought the board, I thought we decided that we wanted our own school psychologist and it sounded like when we discussed it, I can't say for sure I've been supportive, but they sounded like that was the best overall idea. So how did the committee decide? We're not going to do what the board had decided. I guess I'm confused how.
I don't know if it was the board that decided. I thought we had a discussion at the board level about going in this direction.
We did.
And it seemed like it was embraced. And that's why we went, I thought that's why we're interviewing for it.
I mean, we, I, I think we talked a lot about, a lot more about just having our own, but the fact that that individual, if they were employed by us, they'd be more ingrained in the community and not just someone who's coming in punching the clock from another organization.
So there's three candidates. Two were not certified. And a third had, did not really have the, the fit as far as experience for what the, was more experienced with high, high school level kids of a much greater intensity, not necessarily with younger kids.
Yeah. That was my question.
I know, but I'm just trying to give you some background of where.
To sign a contract.
Which contract?
Because, because when I.
Hold on a second.
So, so my question was, how did we get to the point where, I mean, did you guys decide to bag it? And that's it?
No, I, I believe, I don't, I mean, I wasn't part of the team, but I mean, I believe the team interviewed the three candidates that they had. And none of the candidates were, were chosen. So now you're, you're at the beginning, I guess, of the, of the process again. You're still in the same situation. Do you want a psychologist that is, that the district employs, you know, rather than contracts? Or do you want to continue to go with NCES contracted? We would, we would have to repost it again and see what we can get for candidates.
Were the references checked?
Yes, they were.
That's what kind of what I'm getting at, Deb, is when is the, sorry.
It's passed.
What?
It's passed.
No, no, I, I think.
No, no, no.
Brian, Brian's question is.
When do we have to sign a contract with the contracted company?
The NCES?
Yes.
March thirtieth was when we had to notify them.
Okay.
Of, we haven't signed a contract yet.
We haven't signed anything.
We haven't signed anything.
So if that's passed, then theoretically we have nothing. Am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong.
I think we put them on notice that we were going through this process, so hopefully we didn't lose what we had. But we haven't signed anything because they just went through the interview process.
I mean, should we repost it?
I mean, my, my personal opinion from the discussions we had and why we came about this is there was, you know, the reason for going to a, our own psychologist was, you know, multifaceted. First of all, there was probably a cost savings potentially of, you know, even with benefits of, you know, because we are seeing a pretty hefty rate. The biggest thing, I think, Matt or Vance has touched on, was the consistency of the person working with the children. Because I think the way it is now, we have two different psychologists come in, if I'm correct, right?
We have a male and a female.
Right. And, but they're not, they're here on alternating days or, so potentially you could have a student who is comfortable with a psychologist. Maybe sees that person on Tuesday and then an issue comes up on Wednesday and now they're dealing with a completely different psychologist. You know, I, I think that in a perfect world, we would have our own, which we've had in the past, for that consistency factor. And I think, I think Vance made the point of having someone, maybe not so much ingrained in the community, but ingrained in the, the school community and having a little more, a little more vested interest in it, you know, instead of being two days here, two days somewhere else, or three days somewhere else.
I, I also think if, if it's someone who's a full-time salaried employee and they're not being contracted for X amount of hours a week, if there's, if there's some type of major strategic issue with this individual child, we don't have to wait until the person who's seeing that particular child to come in, oh, they're not back until Thursday. This is a salaried position where Scott or Judy or Jenny can say, hey, tomorrow morning, can you get here at seven to meet with the classroom teacher and the parents? And I, I don't know this, I'm not going to say this, it doesn't happen, but I keep, am I correct by saying that the contracted service people probably don't do that? They're not going to stay after, not going to come in early.
I, I have, they have, they have a contract, they have a contracted amount of time, but I have made requests to our school psychologists to meet with whoever, like you've described before. You know, that I, I, I certainly do think that, you know, that, that the folks that we have in here now, to kind of touch upon a couple of things that, you know, Tony mentioned, like, you know, it gets like one is more assigned three, eight, three, five, one's more assigned sixty, twelve. I would, there is a level of investment that they do have. I, I do think that, you know, the, the folks who we have, you know, they're coming from, you know, the, obviously there's like a different kind of contract, but they're still invested, you know, and have a very well working understanding of our kids. I've watched them in the variety settings of working with our kids. I've watched them run meetings, you know, and those things you're talking about. And I have made those requests before. I understand where you're coming from.
Right.
You know, but I also, I do think that, I think it's good for folks to know that the folks that we have that are working with us right now do have a level of, of connection with our kids and do.
Yeah, I'm not saying they don't. I'm just.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess the other question is, they don't work for us. Do, are we guaranteed to get the same two individuals next year?
Yeah, I think they've been with us, they've both been with us now for three years.
Right.
And I mean, we do have input.
Right, but we don't have that guarantee.
We don't guarantee any employee that you have.
Right, or at least if it's our employee, we're not going to ship them to another town.
Right, no, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I mean, that's just my.
I, I just thought, I thought that the, the whole reason we were going in this direction is because there's a value to having somebody here full-time that's ingrained in the culture of our school system. And not that these, everything that I've heard about the people, the, the two psychologists have all been great.
Yeah, me too.
There's any flaw in, in the work that they've done, but, but the, the thought behind it all was with, with what we're dealing with and, and some of the stuff that's going on is that it would be, it would, you could get more out of it if you had somebody that was here full-time. If that's not the direction anymore, you know, I guess that's the decision that has to be made. You know, I was just a board member that was sitting there and, you know, and I was happy to be there and there was a little bit of discussion. But I didn't, to be honest with you, at, at the end of the debrief, I didn't think there was a lot of meaningful conversation that went on about any of the applicants.
Because they weren't?
No, I just didn't think there was any conversation of depth of, of what we had gone through, the interviews that we had gone through. And I'm not saying any of them were the fit for this school either. I'm not saying that either way. I'm just saying that at the end of the brief was very short. It wasn't completely focused on what we were doing there. You know, and it was, and, and then, you know, a decision was made that we're not going to, we're not moving forward with any.
Well, I, I guess at this point, does a board want the administration to repost it and see if there are candidates out there? Because the bottom line is, my understanding is, is that, that everyone was on the same page. I mean, we're going to go for the full-time and, and look for somebody to be employed by the district, five days a week.
Right, I think that's what everyone thought.
And we went down that road and we had three candidates and none of those candidates were, were chosen. So would the board want us to try it again and, and do it again and see what we can get? But in the meantime, your other side is, is that you may not.
Right.
You know, you may not have a time, you may run into a situation, so we could, we could do it again next year. You know what I mean? I don't know. I.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, a lot of the concerns, a lot of the conversation or, or the correspondence that happened about why we weren't moving in this direction happened via, you know, word documents or, it was, it wasn't, a lot of the concerns in there weren't talked about in the debrief. So I was, you know.
Does the administration support this idea?
That's, if you don't support the idea and you'd rather have a contract, that's.
No, it's just a question. I mean, if we.
I support the idea. I definitely, if you want five days a week and you want one person to be doing it. And, and as far as the other qualifications, I think they both could have done, they did the job very well.
I'm not saying support the idea. I'm saying, do you, like, it's not a decision by the board, you know, we direct you to do something. But is, does, if it doesn't make sense to you, what parts don't make sense?
Okay.
Or does it make sense?
All right. It does make sense to me to go for a five-day position and, and be employed by the district. That makes, that makes a lot of sense, you know. As far as how we do that is, is when we try to do it and then it didn't work this time.
Right.
Then my concern is if we tried again right now, and we started in February, January, February, we started posting this position. So because we knew March thirtieth was our, was our cutoff date. So now that we didn't get a person out of that first round, you could go for the second round, but you're going to lose the, you're going to lose the potential of having the psychologists that we do have. That's what happens in small districts, you know, when you try to break away and you're trying to get your new one.
I mean, for my personal, just one guy, I would like the full-time five-day, a week person. However, I mean, I guess your opinion is, do you think we are not going to get any more candidates? Did we start late?
No, no.
I think it might be early.
I think, yeah, it could be, you know, it could be.
Starts early.
The, the other thing we can look at.
Yeah, because I would think, you know, this is the time of year when people may be looking, um, okay, you know, but I don't know. I, I would think, I don't know.
You still are going to have a social worker full-time that will be that, that person that communicates to all, to all agencies and gets everyone together for the wraparound component. But what we could do is, is since we're not, I mean, I was trying to think of different scenarios here. What we could do is, is talk to NCES, see if we could get one psychologist and have them either for the four days or the five day, I mean, five-day psychologist and it be the same person. And then for this year, contract with five days outs, out of district. And in the meantime, you know.
Well, financially, we can't do that. Right?
Well, that one extra day.
Oh, that would be nice.
Yeah, because we only have that amount of money for the four days. We were hoping that money would cover.
Right.
Is it, is it, sorry. Is it normal that you only interview once for a position, interview? And that's like, that seems odd to me.
That we would just try it once, post it once? No, it, it, the thing is, we would try it again, except that we have a, we have a contracted service that does,
Right.
provides us with that now. And they're telling us that, you know, you need to make up your mind what you're going to do.
Right, right, right. I, I understand that.
That's what we're doing.
My, you know, it seems to me that, just in general, if you're looking for, if you're interviewing for a professional position, it's not, you know, you interview three people and you don't get a candidate, that seems like, you know, you interview twenty people before you get a suitable candidate for a professional position. It doesn't seem like that.
There's not twenty people out there.
But there's just not, is that the issue? We're just not getting twenty people?
So from February first till now, it's three total candidates.
Just as though.
Three total candidates. And it was, we interviewed everybody who applied. And two were not certified.
Right.
Yet we still interviewed anyway.
So it's just a.
It's critical short.
It's a critical, it's a critical. It's a critical, it's a critical shortage, it's it's like finding math, science, special ed, you know, it's, you did the pool, like, think, think about the math position we just, we just talked about, seven.
Right.
Total, you know, that's not a lot. You know. Whereas, but on some other positions, you could open it up, if you're looking for a school counselor, I'll get, you know, I'll get fourteen.
Is there, was there like a salary range that was advertised that's that's not adequate or something, or is it just like?
I don't think that you mentioned salary range.
So that's not the issue.
I mean, it may be that we enter a contract with with the same people again for this coming school year, but we extend the decision-making date from March thirtieth to something a little bit deeper, so we don't get in a situation if we decide to do this again, so that we don't get caught in this situation. I don't know. You know, I don't know if we we advertise it over the next two months, if we get more candidates or not, but we don't wanna be left without either.
I mean, that's what I was gonna say, I mean, I feel the way I feel, but I also, it's new water for us, what is your duty, I'm gonna take a little stock in your suggestion on this.
Okay, I I I really wanted, I was really looking towards getting a full-time, you know, five-day a week, so that you can, you have more ease with them, but since we we can't do that, my concern also is, is losing the expertise, the level of expertise that we have in the psychologists that we do have. So if we could possibly get them for, have one person instead of the two, you know, so that you have that one person in the building, I can, I can, you know.
And you have four, not five, right?
Right, and and stay with the four, you know, and then you're, you know, you're so, you're a social worker, you know, is there too, as well as your guidance. But I think you're definitely going down the right road and and looking for a five-day a week.
You know, and I don't necessarily know that it needs to be one person that's here for, I mean, Meg and Ryan work well with the kids that they work with, I think that's okay too. We just need to know, you know, is this where we wanna head? I mean, it's, do we wanna do, try this again next year?
I would, I would say if we're.
Extend the decision-making on having a re-contract with them and say that, you know, June thirtieth instead of March thirtieth, so that we have some time after contracts go out in other districts, and maybe some people make changes, or maybe some people don't, and there's more of a pool, although I don't think there's gonna be a large pool of school psychologists, it sounds like it's a shortage, so.
For me, it doesn't matter if it's one person or two, if we're gonna use the service again, then we're gonna use it, but I I would like to go down this road.
And and the contract, see if we can have it, yeah, I agree with you.
Okay.
But maybe, I, I mean, I think they're gonna run into the same issue that you have with issuing contracts to the teachers, which is, they probably wanna know by June thirtieth, so.
Right.
Maybe instead of asking for an extension, or, I mean, if they're willing to grant that, great, but if not, we gotta figure out a way to start the process at a at a time where, you know, we're not interviewing three people and then having no time to repost it if we don't find a.
Right, right, I think we need to start looking maybe earlier and and letting them know that it's gonna be, you know,
Yeah.
a situation where it's gonna start the following school year, but maybe somebody's finishing up in a school anyway, you know, and they're gonna be looking, I mean, we could certainly put it out there.
Has the school district ever used like a recruiter, professional recruitment services, somebody that can sort of seek out the the type of candidates that we're looking for, as opposed to just waiting for them to come out?
Well, we put it through all the the school websites.
Websites.
Websites for positions, all the associations. Ed Jobs, there's something in the North Country.
Ed Jobs is a big site, anyone who works in school would just go to it.
That's a known thing.
Yeah, it is.
Why couldn't we make an offer to one of the people that's working in our schools right now that the contracted services?
I I think. What is that called?
Not compete.
Yeah, no.
Oh, we have not.
They, they have one.
So they would have to be, they would have to not be working in our district and within within our district for then for a calendar year.
Okay, so.
You got a calendar year.
We've got a calendar year.
But they work.
But they'd, they'd have to be unemployed the next calendar year.
They have to go work somewhere else.
They wouldn't work here.
So if I was.
It's like tampering. It's a little bit, yeah.
Like, hey, go go to Canton for a year and.
Yeah, I mean, so they would have to go somewhere else.
Their, their firm would send them somewhere, they're not looking.
They, their firm, or or they, or they could just be working somewhere else, like, they, they cannot, they can't work here.
For a year.
For a year, after, they have to wait before three sixty-five.
But we could, we could potentially go to Canton, school psychologist, and make them an offer.
It's like a MLB, uh, general manager.
But that's, that's valid, though, I mean, if they do this contracted service and they're doing a good job, or we could say, hey, listen, we don't want one of these people back this year, send them to another district.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a tough spot to be in.
Yeah, I think it, it sounds like time-wise, we're kind of up against it, as, I guess my one question, moving forward, is, you know, I don't know if we would wanna post this and and lose out on contracted services for this year and be hunting for another one. How many hours a day are the psychologists here those four days?
I think it's, um, four days.
It's all day?
Yeah, it's all day.
Okay, and now, when they're here for for that time period, are they, there's certain kids they're working with throughout the day, and are they, are they able to break away from that if we have a a different need and?
So, so I mean, I'll just, I'll speak to the, them, obviously, I work with one a little bit more than the other.
Sure.
So they have a certain amount of, so they have certain meetings that they're attending to, you know, so, basically, anything that is, anything as a baseline that is, you know, put in in any child's IEP or fireball plan, so whether it be meeting those meetings and making recommendations, you know, if it's testing with certain kids, if it's gonna be meeting with them for a certain amount of time over the course of the week, as dictated by their plan. But then on top of that, you know, there is, there is consult time, where I, I mean, I've sat down with them to ask questions, they've come to me with with things, I know they've gone to Mrs. Doyle or Ms. Mask regarding certain issues, so, I mean, there is some time in there.
Yeah, so, you know, even though they're, I mean, even though they're contracted services, we're not, it's not set in stone what their day looks like, I mean, there's a general guideline, but if they're, they say, I'm with this student A from this time, and student B from this time, student C, but then you have a a situation where it's like, we really need to, your service is down here at this time, you can pull them away.
Right, we pay them for the hours, and so then, what happens within that block of time?
Okay.
Is kind of how we work with them.
All right.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. So I think at this point, you know, everybody feels that we should probably do the contracted services again for this coming school year and revisit this.
Yep.
Maybe with a elongated timeframe, maybe have more success.
And I can talk to NCES and find out how we can do, how we can go about doing that, so that, because our goal is to have our own, you know, psychologist, so.
And they're trying to plan as well, so that's the, that's the catch, yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe it can't be June thirty, maybe it can be.
May, maybe, you know, some sort of extension next year.
April, another month.
And at least if that, if that's not possible, or if they're gonna say, well, we'll give you till April thirtieth or something, that, we can have a discussion, figure out a better plan than than what I guess was played out.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Anything else, continuing business, something on the agenda?
I have a question, I don't know if it's continuing business or not. You can tell me.
Right now is a good time.
You said that, that we're gonna have the the social worker, are we, has that been hired, or is that in the process of hiring?
No, that's being posted, that had to wait until after the school district meeting before it could be posted.
Okay, right, right, right.
So now that will be posted, and then we'll set up, you know, interviews and.
Okay, great.
And that will be ready for September.
The the objective is to have somebody in place with that coverage.
Okay. Staff, Madame Barr, welcome.
A lot of things, so many, um, Kate, from Katie Parent, Lynwood's Osceola chapter of the National Honor Society inducted their two newest members, Daria Etchings and Samantha Tower. That was today, right before this meeting. We also thank Mr. Baker for his many years of service as an NHS faculty council member. From Burke Duchette, Saturday mornings have been pretty busy at Lynwood Elementary. Cool. Uh, through March, reading enrichment finished up on March thirty-first, we had four themed groups, five teachers, and thirty-five students in grades K through five. Mrs. Pamblin and Mrs. Bowden had many fun surprises in stores with their K-one surprise group, including baking hide-and-seek surprise muffins one morning. Mrs. Mars creates two and three amusement park groups, built games, you and roller coasters, and made yummy amusement park foods. Mrs. Smith's group learned about many different crafts with her grade three collaboration group. One morning, they chalked up the halls like the chalked box kid did in the book. Mrs. Donnie had a group of fourth and fifth graders who learned about secret codes and messages. This codebreaker group broke codes and even learned to dust fingerprints. The kids had a blast, and one student told me that she loved it so much that she wished it would never end, and thank you for your continued support. I'm not sure if this is the same thing, but Megan Hohl says, for the first week in March, Title One team put together Read Across America activity for students K through five, focus was on fairy tales. Ms. Bartlett posted read alouds of various fairy tales with follow-up STEM projects for students to complete. The school decorated the K through five doors, each representing a different fairy tale, also endeemed that villain activity for students to try out, and a vote for your favorite fairy tale board, Beauty and the Beast won by landslide. It was an enjoyable time for all who partied. And Brenda Vance shared about the FBLA conference, and, I just thought I already presented that, so I'm not here to. Carol Smith would like to thank John Hamm for donating his school board salary to fund the elementary memory book. His generous contribution will make it easier to produce the memory books for the elementary students. Mr. Adams and his yearbook class will be producing the memory book this year. And that is everything.
Thank you. Community? Hearing nothing. We do have some business to handle in non-public, so at this time, I will pull the board to go into non-public session for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of person other than a school board member. Brian, well said.
Yes.
Jay, yes, Vance? All right, and we will be voting on some things probably when we come back to public.